Alright, can I have everyone stand for the Fledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you for being in our audience, if you'd please be us. Alright, well, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the law of the Constitution, on the nation, under God, indivisible, and omnipotent, with all its strength and all its wisdom. Okay, so we need a few things to have in an official town meeting. First thing, they duly serve warrants. A quorum of fifteen. The quorum to our town clerk, we made it. We also need a town clerk. And a moderator. My name is Keith Menard, and I am your moderator this evening. We have certain non-resident members of town meeting who are here to provide their expertise, such as the people at this table, our town accountant, our town manager, maybe the correct -- not town manager, maybe the lieutenant manager, as well as our lawyer. Sorry, Matt. We're here to help provide their expertise, as well as members of our school, our town. Is there any dissent to allowing them to speak at this meeting? Okay, seeing none, they are allowed to speak. We have our finance committee. If the finance committee could please stand, be recognized. These are the people who work diligently to present recommendations on our warrant. Thank you all very much for your service. I appreciate everything you've done to help get ready for town meeting. We have currently two openings for that committee. If anyone is interested in serving, it is a very important part of our town, and you really do get to know some of the inner workings of the town. So if you are interested in volunteering for that committee, please contact Town Hall. The Selectmen's Office will be able to get you an application, and we can go ahead and set up an interview for that. People who make town meeting possible. We have our checkers, Lisa Posma and Anne Burgess; our counters, Don Posma, Andrea Cortez, and Pam Carter; our constable, Deb Blain and Carol Field; and our mic runner, Alex Cortez. Who, like, a foot in like six months. So a little bit about how town meeting may be run. Motion is made and seconded. After that, there'll be a proponent's speech, followed by a question and answer. Please wait for the mic to arrive to you before you start your question. Stand, state your name and address, and direct all comments through the moderator. After question and answer has been exhausted, we'll move on to debate. Again, direct all debate through the moderator. After debate is exhausted, or the question is called, which needs a second and a two-thirds vote, and to be recognized by the moderator so as to know, "All right, go to the question!" No, it doesn't work. You have to raise your hand to be recognized in order to call the question. Votes will be taken by unanimous consent. The way that marks is, I say, "Is there any dissent to passing this article?" If there is none, then the article is considered passed unanimously. Otherwise, we can do a voice vote, standard all those in favor, all those opposed. And then finally, on some articles, we may require a counted vote, which I would ask you to stand, hold up your voter card, and to be counted. So I need to accept a motion to allow the moderator to declare the outcome of two-thirds and nine-tenths votes in accordance with Section 8 of our town bylaws and Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 15. And a simple "so moved" will do, I guess.
So moved.
A whole lot of lawyers looking at me funny.
Wow. Can't do vocal reparations on nine-tenths.
Okay, on everything except for nine-tenths. So, uh, for --
Or four-fifths.
Yeah, for two-thirds votes.
Right.
Yeah. Do you need any amendments?
I'm trying to change that law.
He did!
Really?
Oh, you're trying to change that law? Good. Changed it. That's what we used at the last meeting. So I will accept the motion to allow moderator to declare the outcome of a two-thirds vote in accordance with Section 8 of our town bylaw and Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 15. Second. So moved. Back there, second over here. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. It passes unanimously. Amendments, they must be in writing, should be made after the question and answer session. In other words, during debate, must be recognized to make the motion, and must be determined by the moderator to be within his scope. In other words, it can't be beyond what was given a sufficient warning to town residents of what we would be voting on today. Please keep in mind, while what we're doing is serious and has both long and short-term impacts to all of us, for all neighbors, please be respectful, enjoy the process, it's truly a great one that has been bestowed upon us. Just a couple of quick announcements before we get going. There's a family in town, the Coots. Some of you may have heard about a fundraiser that's been going on in town. Mr. Coots has cancer, which neither Mr. or Mrs. Coots have been able to work. They're great volunteers in town. You've ever seen people just going down and watering the flowers downtown, just on their own volition, they never ask for any recognition or anything? That's them. So if you could please, if you weren't able to make the fundraiser, this is just one of the ways that our town comes together. You can drop off an envelope to the attention of Cindy Lefort from La France at the Grill on Main. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence for some great volunteers that have passed this year. I am a big believer in volunteerism, and the people who have put forth their time in town in order to make this place a better town deserve both our respect and our recognition. Dan Dunleavy, Angie Laura and the Laura family, and Neon Wazinski, as well as other members of our community. If we could please just have a brief moment of silence. Thank you. And with that, Article 1. Moderator recognizes Mr. Bonin.
Good evening. I move that the vote town to raise and appropriate the sum of $165,599 and transfer $48,350 from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriations account to fund the following amendments to Article 2 of the annual town meeting, May 7th, 2018. Increase assessors' wages, $1,500. Increase civil defense expense, $2,000. Increase treasurer collector wages, $8,000. Increase cemetery expense, $12,000. Increase fire wages, $16,000. Increase ambulance wages, $48,350. Increase landfill maintenance, $800. Increase fire expense, $3,000. Increase total insurance and employee benefits, $35,000. Increase building department expenses, $26,000. Increase technology expense, $55,000. Increase public building maintenance expenses, $15,000. Decrease library expense, $2,701. And decrease building wages to $6,000.
Motion made and seconded, you have the floor.
Thank you. This article brings the budget back into balance after reviewing expenses. Expense trends over the first four months of the fiscal year have taken into account. Some items reflect the result of reorganization activities.
Questions? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the articles? Article... Seeing none, is there any dissent to passing this article unanimously? Seeing none, Article 1 passes unanimously. Article 2, prior year bills.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the school personnel and expense account the sum of $29.99, and from the technology department expense account, the sum of $304.93 to pay for the following prior year bills. School department slash coupon lumber, $29.99. Technology department, $129.75. And the cable department, Charred Communications, for $175.
Second. Motion made and seconded, you have the floor.
These bills are for goods and services that the town has already received, but were billed after they closed in the fiscal year.
Any questions? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on Article 2? Also seeing none, is there any dissent to passing Article 2 unanimously? Seeing none, Article 2 passes unanimously. Article 3, moderator recognizes Mr. Cortez.
Good evening. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $17,500 from free cash to the other post-employment benefits OPEB account.
Motion made and seconded, you have the floor.
The town attempts to identify every opportunity to move funds into the OPEB account, which will help address the future costs of post-retirement benefits the town is obligated to provide under both its labor contracts and state law. This allocation for free cash continues this practice.
Any questions? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Okay, also seeing none, is there any dissent to passing Article 3 unanimously? Seeing none, Article passes by unanimous consent. Article 4. Glad you didn't go for it.
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $32,390 from free cash to the stabilization account.
Second. Motion made and seconded, you have the floor.
With respect to the majority of the funds, the town received an insurance settlement for damages to the second floor of the municipal center resulting from a roof falling last fiscal year. Basic repairs were made, but there is currently no approved capital project to make a more permanent fix. The site may be addressed by the Capital Improvement Committee at the annual town meeting. Small claim settlements under similar circumstances make up the remainder of the total transfer
Would anyone like to speak on the article? Also seeing none, is there any dissent to passing Article 4 unanimously? Seeing none, Article 4 passes unanimously. Article 5, moderator recognizes Mr. Davis.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $70,518 for its operating capital assessment by the Blackstone Valley Vocational Regional School District for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2018.
Motion made, is there a second? Second. You have the floor.
At the annual town meeting last May, the voters rejected part of the BBT funding request out of concern over the very large increase in the department's budget. While other towns raised similar issues, Douglas was the only community, unfortunately, to raise, to vote to reduce BBT's allocation. Because a minimum of vote of four towns is required for the reduction to take place by law, Douglas must now find, fund its full share according to the BBT budget request.
Any questions? Please wait for the mic. In the back.
Mark Monju, 20 Depot Street. Where's the additional funding coming from?
It's gonna be a raise and appropriate. We reduced the article at the annual town meeting in the spring in anticipation of this having to come forward at the fall town meeting, so there was some, it's still a reason appropriate article until the tax rate's set.
Is your question answered?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, seeing none. Would anyone like to speak on the article? Okay, also seeing none, is there any dissent to passing this article unanimously? Seeing none, the article passes unanimously. Moderator recognizes Mr. Morse.
Oh, wait, what's going on? What happened?
In lieu of Mr. Morse, you give me. I move that the town vote to ratify the collective bargaining agreement executed by the voter selection and the firefighter EMT union on October 23rd, 2018.
Motion made, is there a second? Second.
The firefighter union in the town have been in negotiations since the spring. For many years, the contract was not updated, except for annual agreements around wages. The new contract is a fully up-to-date document, where appropriate specific areas of the firefighter contract were brought into line with similar provisions in the police officer contract. The document also solidifies a rank structure that reinforces the accountability and the authority of full-time lieutenants that serve as shift supervisors through compensation. At the same time, contract measures for past versions of the document that maintain critical cost controls have been preserved. The selectmen will intimately involved in this negotiation and unanimously recommend
Mark Monju, 20 Depot Street. How many firefighters does this impact?
Seven.
There are seven full-time firefighters in Douglas?
Could you just state who you are and...
Sorry. Mr. Moderator, may I answer the question through you?
Yes, please.
Matt Monju, Town Attorney, there are seven.
Two question answered? Other questions? Okay, well, I feel like I have to use this slide because we made it. Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Okay, also seeing none, is there any dissent to passing this article unanimously? Seeing none, the article passes unanimously. We're gonna drag this out a little bit, I get paid by the hour. I'll talk a little. Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town authorize the town administrator to enter into a five-year contract with Charter Communications for Internet Services.
Motion made and seconded, you have the floor.
The town has reconfigured its information technology network to reduce annual costs while improving service levels to the town's various buildings. Charter has offered a five-year contract at a lower annual cost than the three-year version of the same services. Any contract more than three years' duration must be authorized in town meeting. Since Charter is the only internet provider, with town-wide coverage now and foreseeable future, competitive bidding will not help lower our costs. The voter selection request at town meeting allows the town permanent officer to commit to a five-year contract.
Okay, so I am gonna treat this one as a frequently asked question, real quickly. Matt, can you tell us the scope of what this contract actually covers? Because I think there was some confusion about whether or not this was entering the entire town into another cable contract, but I don't believe that is the case, so if you could just expound a little bit further.
Mr. Moderator, if I may. So this is the town's internet access agreement. For many years, Charter Communications has more or less owned the town's network, both in terms of its access to the internet, as well as a wide-area network suite of services that for all intents and purposes, the town's renting from that, including the equipment. Analysis has proved that that's an extremely expensive way to do this. The town will invest, using its existing operating budget, in the necessary hardware to carry our own internet traffic, and we will be entering into a three- or five-year contract for access to the internet at speeds that are much higher than we have today. We're having difficulty communicating with the world wide web because the old network assembly is outdated. So this only covers our, those buildings that we have that communicate to the internet. Most of the time, they're communicating to Town Hall, and there's one connection to Town Hall that feeds all that traffic back to our various buildings, so that we, a highway, water and sewer, the fire department, and the police department, and the town together along the Seacoast.
Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Okay, seeing none, is there any dissent to passing this article unanimously? Seeing none, Article... 7 passes unanimously. Article 8.
I move that the town authorize the town administrator to enter into a municipal energy purchase contract for a term up to five years.
Second. Motion made and seconded, you have the floor.
The town has been advised by its professional energy consultant, Tradition Energy, that current market conditions are favorable for long-term energy contract terms to be put into effect. The town currently has an electricity purchasing contract in place through calendar year 2021, and based upon Tradition Energy's recommendation, the voter selection best at town meeting grants authority for the contract terms to be extended due calendar year 2023.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? This is a great slide, isn't it? Completely illegible, but has everything you need. Sorry about that. Okay, would anyone like to speak on the article? Seeing none, is there any dissent to passing it unanimously? Seeing none, Article 8 passes unanimously. Article 9. Mr. Hughes again.
Yes, it is. I move that the town authorize the recreation commission to enter into a ten-year lease agreement with the Douglas Axeman Soccer Club for the Martin Road Park, or take any other action related there to.
Second. You have the floor.
The Axeman Soccer Club has identified grant opportunities that would fund in construction of a full-size regulation soccer field on a new space at Martin Road Park. In order to complete, excuse me, in order to complete with these grants, the Axeman must have legal control over the site to be improved. And if successful, the effort to build the field will alleviate use on existing town and school department fields.
Any questions?
Kent Vincent, 23, Glen Street. Just wanted to know what the finance committee recommended.
Mr. Byburn, finance committee met before town meeting and voted to recommend this article.
Okay. In case anyone couldn't hear, the finance committee voted to recommend this article. Other questions?
Brett Arkell, 3-year-old, West Drive. Are the existing fields at Martin Road Park gonna be impacted by this anyway?
I'm looking at the Axeman Soccer Club, I believe the answer is no.
So the best answer seems to be no. Is there a person representing the... Okay, right here. If you could please state your name, as well as your relation to the Axeman Soccer Club.
I'm Stephen Clancy, I'm the president of the club.
What, will it impact the fields?
There'll be no impact to the baseball fields out of there at all.
Is that the question, Brett? Okay. Thank you. Other questions? In the back?
Mark Monju, 20 Depot Street. So with this lease, will the Axeman Soccer Club now be maintaining the baseball fields and the dugouts and the fences and all that stuff, and therefore, is there gonna be something that's part of the lease that will direct them that they need to keep it in certain, you know, keep it maintained?
Matt, you wanna answer that? No? Excellent?
This is for the soccer field only.
Just bring the mic up now.
No, sorry. This is for the soccer field only that will be installed. Baseball will have the responsibilities for their fields separately.
But you would, the Axeman Soccer Club would be responsible for maintaining...
Yes, we will maintain everything with the field.
With the soccer fields?
With the soccer field, yes. Thank you.
Is your question answered?
No.
You have a follow-up? Go ahead.
So I guess I don't understand, is the lease for the entire Martin Road Park with the playground and everything, or is it just a portion of the park where the soccer field is gonna be?
Would you like to take that one? Please.
It's just a portion of where the soccer field will be.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Okay, seeing none, let's see. This one does require a two-thirds vote, so I'm going to try unanimous consent first. Is there any dissent to passing this article? S consent? Okay. Does someone want our Attorney General to be on the panel? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying no.
No.
I believe that the ayes have it. At this point, if anyone doubts the outcome of that vote, maybe now we'll protest the aye count. I declare that did pass by two-thirds. We good?
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash for all associated costs a sum of $60,000 for the purpose of funding the following: LED streetlight account, Article 4 of the special town meeting, May 7th, 2018, and all associated costs, $35,000. Library heating and weatherization, and all associated costs, $35,000. And same to be spent under the direction of the town administrator. The town included administering Green Communities Community Compact designation grant funding of $145,000 in pursuit of energy conservation projects that improve town assets and save on long-term energy costs. The town has been able to obtain favorable pricing under competitive bidding, complimentary grants, and utility incentives that have stretched the original $145,000 grant to be able to cover nearly $210,000 worth of projects. The supporting grants and utility incentives are not paid out until a project has been completed and accepted. This motion will allow the town to pay for goods and services required to complete the projects pending reimbursement from outside grants and utility companies supporting payments.
I don't know if we did the formatting on this, but that's just terrible. Any, any questions? It was me, I did it. I did the formatting on it. Any questions on this article? Seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Okay, also seeing none, is there any dissent to passing Article 10 unanimously? Seeing none, Article 10 passes unanimously. Article 11. Still not, Mr. Morse. Still not, Mr. Morrison.
I move that the town votes will amend the Town of Douglas general bylaws by adding the following section nine marijuana to Article four licenses and permits as printed in the warrant.
Motion being, is there a second? Motion being, and second, you have the floor.
The town's moratorium on retail marijuana establishments will expire on December thirty-first, 2018. The Board of Selectmen requests the Town Meeting vote to approve the general bylaw to establish the board as its licensing authority to these establishments. The town has several opportunities to define its relationship with any retail marijuana establishment. All retail marijuana establishments must have a state license issued by the Cannabis Control Commission in order to operate. Law requires that these establishments also enter into a host community agreement that lays out in general terms how the town and the business will accommodate each other. The marijuana statute also allows towns to create a licensing authority to govern specific details of the establishment's operations and generally follow the licensing norms commonly associated with alcohol when it comes to hours of operation proximity of similar businesses, et cetera. All municipalities retain their authority to govern commercial operations via their zoning bylaws. This proposal addresses the licensing authority. The Selectmen recommend that the town protect itself in the short term with a licensing bylaw with all of its public hearing requirements as well as accountability authority and continue to work on finding a workable zoning framework to apply to this still untested retail market.
Good evening, Howard D'Amico, fifty-five, Old Farm Road. What would be the effect if this did not pass?
Let me see if I, if it did not pass, it did not.
I will defer in part to Town Council, but I would imagine that we will be unable to license any retail establishments. We have to have a licensing authority. Mr. Ball?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through to the previous speakers. I agree with that answer. What this does is it creates an extra set of regulatory tools for handling retail marijuana. If you don't have these tools on the book, then you don't have these tools.
Has your question been answered? No? Do you have a follow-up?
Town Council said this was an extra set of regulations. In the absence of the extra set of regulations, what would be the defining regulations?
Well, with your permission, Mr. Moderator, as the previous speaker well knows, the Cannabis Control Commission and Chapter ninety-four G have adopted an extensive set of regulations, regulations that have taken so long to develop that there is, at least as of this date, no retail establishment open in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So the question before the body is whether you want local regulatory input into the control of retail establishments or whether you want to depend entirely on the state set of regulations.
Thank you. Other questions? In the back?
Matthew Dowlin from Pine Street. I have two questions. One is following up on the previous. If this doesn't pass, is it possible for the town to enact an extension of the moratorium so that that moratorium can extend for whatever time the body would consider? Second question would be, has there been any sort of study on the impact this might have on public safety for Douglas in terms of traffic, in terms of what the impact might be on our hard-working law enforcement as well? We are a border town, how will this affect our borders with states, again, where marijuana and retail sales are not legal? So has there been some sort of impact study as to how retail sales of marijuana in Douglas would impact the public safety of Douglas?
So question one, we're going to go to our Town Council. I will say, I spent eight years in Arizona, proud Sun Devil alum, and this is the first time I've ever heard a town in Massachusetts referred to as a border town. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, to address the previous speaker with respect to question Right now, the issue of adopting a moratorium or extending a moratorium does not appear on the warrant. The article that's in front of the meeting is solely for a licensing set of regulations. And subject to the moderator's discretion, moderator's call, there is nothing in there that would, at least in my opinion, allow a motion to amend this article to create an extended moratorium. Now, if the meeting were to vote on extending a moratorium and disagreed with my opinion, I think the issue that you would have is that more likely than not, in fact, I would say just about ninety-nine point ninety-nine percent, for those of you who like the exactitude, the Attorney General would turn down the article extending the moratorium because it didn't appear on the warrant. And in the remarkably unlikely event that the Attorney General were to approve such moratorium emanating from this meeting.
We can, we don't, we don't have to go that far down that road because.
Look, you'd get sued to lose.
Yeah, an amendment introducing an extension of the moratorium would be out of scope for this article. However, your second question of, has any impact studies been done about allowing recreational marijuana into our town? I'm not sure who the best person to answer that is. You'll take it?
Okay, please. I can tell you that we, as a town, did not undertake any studies, and I can also tell you that I'm not aware of any studies for this logic, maybe, I'm not sure, that address the points that you raised. I can tell you that the last line of the gist I read there talked about an untested market, and I think that's the best way to describe it. I watched an interview with the police chief in Leicester on TV last night, and he acknowledged the same thing. Some of the concerns you raised, they don't have answers to because no one's done this yet, so they don't know what the answer is. Leicester is not a so-called border town, but I think the same principle applies.
Do you have one more follow-up? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I said I was going to address question number two, but, so don't take this as legal advice, it's just more anecdotal advice from my own experience of having dealt with this issue. Right now, I believe that there are studies out there that will justify just about any position that anyone, anyone wants to take with respect to the retail medical use of marijuana. You can find studies that will say, oh, great, no problem, and then you can certainly find studies that will talk about it being a bad idea. I realize that's probably not directly helpful, but it's just a fact of lobbying efforts out there. Thank you.
Okay, other questions? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Please.
Finance Committee took your position on this, as you can see in the circular. Personally, as a resident of Douglas, I have many concerns.
Let me just interrupt you just briefly. Can everyone hear her okay? Okay, so.
I'll speak up. That better?
Yes, your name and address as well, please.
Mr. Moderator, I would request that you put up a slide that shows the vote that we took in May two thousand seventeen that began the moratorium. Do you have that available?
It's that, probably goop right there.
Can we enlarge any part of that?
Um, I have.
I'd like to enlarge the second paragraph, please, so that's legible. And I will read it to you.
Uh, that technology fails. I can, I can go like this.
All right, let me read this, please, to Town Meeting. First of all, what we voted on in two thousand seventeen is called, what was a zoning bylaw. And it was a type of temporary moratorium regarding recreational marijuana. And we added, it passed, and the second paragraph reads, "Under the current zoning bylaw, a marijuana establishment is not defined and is not a specified permitted use in the town. As this is a new type of land use in the state, there will be unique and new aspects to the use that could require oversight and regulations. These local impacts, which could be legal, land use, public safety and public health, should be evaluated and addressed in a comprehensive manner in the zoning bylaws prior to the permitting of a marijuana establishment. The moratorium of a finite duration will allow the town to carefully study the potential impacts, both primary and secondary, of such establishments, and through a directed planning process, recommend zoning bylaw amendments to address the town's concerns in the context of comprehensive land use planning and other town planning goals and objectives. Personally, as I see it, I have seen none of this happen in Douglas. I do not know why. What we are left with tonight is a general bylaw, which is not a zoning bylaw. I just would like to say that as a zoning, if zoning does not have permitted use in Douglas, then, then nothing can be permitted. You cannot, you cannot permit a marijuana establishment if it's not on our list of permitted One other little area that I'd like to point out, it says, "Moratorium shall be in effect through and including January one, two thousand nineteen, or until such time as zoning amendments are adopted that address marijuana establishments, which either shall be zoner." The gentleman earlier spoke about being a tri-state area. Douglas also has an issue that we all know and love called the Wallem Lake problem. I can't imagine how this would impact the Wallem Lake issue we have with people coming from out of state, et cetera. We have a public safety committee in town, we have a planning board in town. I don't think the planning board has come forth with any recommendations on this. I think that we are way too early. I think that we may not have to have another town meeting. Maybe in January to address this. But I don't think the Town of Douglas wants to just go ahead and allow the board be a licensing authority with no understanding of what rules and regulations are going to be put into place. They talk about possible similarity to liquor stores. Well, liquor stores are regulated actually by the, by the state, and it's in writing. There is no regulation by the state for marijuana shops. We all live here, we all live in town, and I don't want to see it ruined by some bad decisions. Thank you.
Could you just state your name and address, please?
Pam Holmes, one oh eight Maple Street, Douglas.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on the article? In the back?
Again, Matthew Dowlin from Pine Street. Again, I would like to agree with the previous speaker as well. I think that it's extremely rash to even consider licensing retail marijuana establishments in Douglas if we haven't considered any of the issues of impact of zoning that this might have on our community. I know that many will say, well, it is legal in the state of Massachusetts at this point. But just because something is legal does not make it the best decision for a community to take. And I think as a community, we need to think about what the impact of having retail marijuana establishments will be in our community. I can say it's not what I want in my community. I think that we have to think of what sort of values we want to express as a community for our families, for our children. And again, there are lots of things that are legal that are simply not good decisions for particular communities. And I argue that for our particular community of Douglas, this is not the decision that we should be making.
Would, would anyone else like to speak on the article?
Good evening. Caroline Franklin, Tensmith Highway, Douglas. I am the owner of Caroline's Cannabis, which is a provisionally licensed retail marijuana establishment located in Oxbridge, Massachusetts, right on hundred sixteen. But I'm here tonight as a resident of Douglas, a taxpayer, a community member, and my kids go to school here, and also a proud supporter of cannabis businesses in Massachusetts. This is an amazing opportunity for Douglas, and it's going to revitalize the town, encourage and attract other businesses, and provide local tax revenue that would directly impact and better this town and community core. What retail stores provide is access to clean and safe marijuana and marijuana products, security to customers, purity testing, portioning, clear and concise labeling, instructions, childproof packaging, and twenty-one-plus ID verification, and in hope will eliminate the need for the black market that currently exists in Douglas, Massachusetts. That's all I want to say tonight, and please support your cannabis community here.
Anyone else like to speak on the article? Okay, seeing none, this requires a simple majority in order to pass, and if you think I'm going to declare that by a voice vote, well, just won't let you guys come up with that joke. So all those in favor, please signify by standing and raising your voter card. You may be seated. The ayes have it by a vote of fifty-one to ten. Article twelve.
Thank you. I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of Massachusetts general laws, Chapter sixty-four N., Section three, to impose a three percent local sales tax on the sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by a marijuana retailer operating within the Town of Douglas.
Second? Mr. Main, second, you have the floor.
In order to receive revenues from retail marijuana establishments in the town, the town must accept Chapter sixty-four N., Section three of the Mass General Laws.
town must accept Chapter 64 N., Section 3 of the Mass. General laws, the 3% tax as the maximum authorized by state law.
Questions?
Leslie Brookline, Douglas, 20 Depot Street. How does that compare to surrounding towns?
Do you mean the 3% tax? That's a statewide law, it applies to all communities. I don't know the answer. I don't know, 3%, let me qualify that. 3% is the maximum allowed by the state law. Whether other towns have adopted lesser amounts, I don't know, but they can adopt more than 3%.
You have a follow-up?
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to figure if that makes us competitive with area towns. I would think that that would be something we check into.
I don't, I don't think there's an answer to that. Other questions? Okay, seeing none, up in the back.
Christina Menard, 15 Mantox Street. What, of the 3% tax, what is it going to be for, the use in our town? Is there a way to portion out pieces of the 3% to go to certain committees, or, for example, beautification, or just kind of appropriate it at certain places?
As I understand the question, you want to know if the money is going to be earmarked for certain departments within the town? We haven't taken any, I'll defer to Mr. Bowen, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Threw to the previous speaker. Pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 53, the revenue that is received will go into the general fund and will be subject to town meeting appropriation.
Is your question answered? You have a follow-up? Okay. Go ahead.
Is there a way to earmark portions of the 3% that go into the town budget? I guess that's my question. So I understand it's going into the general budget, can we earmark it?
So, I'll answer that question briefly, which is, nothing that would be in the scope of this article. If there's a follow-up for procedure for that, go ahead, you can explain how that would work.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The way the revenue collected works is, the commissioner of revenue will collect this 3% local excise tax at the same time that the commissioner of revenue collects the sales tax. And then at some interval, I'm not sure they've decided what the interval will be yet, but at least annually, that money that's collected, the 3% local excise, will be distributed to the, to the town, and will go into the general fund. Now, once it's in the general fund and it becomes certified as available for appropriation, town meeting by articles put on by the Board of Selectmen or petitioned articles will decide how to appropriate the money. So you could come up with a citizen's petitioned article that sought to have the money spent in any particular way that you felt that was inappropriate, you're in the town's legislature. Now, as for a standing permanent earmark, one that carried over every year, you know, for example, the 3% shall automatically go into thus and such fund. Generally, that type of permanent earmark requires special legislation. Now, could you get that down as special legislation? Theoretically, yes. See, petitioned article at town meeting, petition the legislature for that special act that requires that the money be permanently earmarked for whatever purpose it is that you have in mind. The bottom line is that as the town's legislative body and as each and every one of you, a citizen, legislate or, it will be your decision as to how the money will be spent.
Other questions? Okay, seeing none, would anyone like to speak on the article? Also seeing none, is there any dissent to passing this article unanimously? Seeing none, Article 12 passes unanimously. Okay, again, I would like to reiterate that we do have openings on the Finance Committee. If you're interested in joining, please contact the Selectmen's Office, fill out an application. We'd love to get you involved. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Motion being, is there a second? Motion being, and second, and all those in favor of going home, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Ayes have it. Good night.